All right, thank you. We're convening the Senate Committee on Transportation. This is our first hearing of the year. We're here online via video conference. It's 3:00 PM Tuesday, February 1st. We do have a number of measures we're going to be considering this afternoon. So what we'll do is we'll go through the testimony and for those who had signed to testify, we'll call folks one at a time. And we will be asking folks to limit their comments to make sure that we get through all the testifiers. And after each bill, after everybody's testified in each bill, we'll be calling folks up if there are any questions of any of the testifiers. That said, if we do get cut off, we'll try to reestablish connection. Otherwise, we'll be deferring the rest of the agenda to our next meeting, which would be Tuesday, February 3rd at 3:00 PM online as well. And with that, I'd like to introduce Senator Lorraine Noe, our vice chair, and Senator Miley Shumagbukoro, who's, I believe, will be joining us, as well as other committee members. Senator Favella, I saw, was on, and I'm sure the folks will be coming and going as they're able. So that said, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 measures up first. This afternoon is Senate Bill 2825 relating to harbors, which requires the Department of Transportation Harbors Division to conduct a comprehensive study examining increased commercial activity at Kalailo Harbor to support the offloading and additional cargo containers and livestock transportation in the area and makes an appropriation. And testifying first on SB 2825 is the Department of Transportation. With comments. Next, we have Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Hawaii Cattlemen's Council with comments. Mattson Navigation Company in opposition. Hawaii Logistics Services and Hawaii Transit, excuse me, Hawaii Logistics Services and Transportation Association in support. Hawaii Meets LLC in support. And Couple A Chamber of Commerce in support. Is there anyone with us that we missed here who wished to testify in person online? Otherwise, if there's not, are there any questions? And seeing as there's none, let's move on to the next measure. Senate Bill 652 relating to special license plates, which authorizes the issuance of special number license plates for members of the Hawaii Civil Air Patrol. And testifying first on SB 652 is looks like the Hawaii Wing Civil Air Patrol. Lieutenant Colonel Dryden Jr., maybe getting this wrong, but in support. And also Chantal Lonergan for the Civil Air Patrol in support, and Mr. Brian Lynch in support. There's no one we missed. So there's nobody who testified in person to ask questions of. So let's move on to the next measure, which is Senate Bill 2896, making an appropriation for highway widening. It appropriates funds to DOT to widen Queen Kahumanu Highway and Kuakini Highway on the, on a Hawaii island. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation. Good afternoon.
Good morning, Chair. Thanks for allowing us to testify. Standing in support. Thank you.
Oh, thanks very much. Up next is Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Office of the Mayor, Hawaii County in support.
Hello, Chair. Lawyer Chair Lee, Vice Chair Noe, and members of the Senate Committee on Transportation. My name is Bobby Command. I'm the Deputy Managing Director of the County of Hawaii and Mayor Roth's Policy Advisor for the West Side of Hawaii Island. The mayor wholeheartedly supports Senate Bill 2896 regarding the widening of Queen Kahumanu Highway and Kuakini Highway from Henry Street to Kamehameha Third Road. The single widening project of not more than four miles would benefit residents living in a 60-mile region from South Point to South Kohala by shortening commuting times and easing motorists frustration. The mayor's office has previously submitted testimony available to answer any of your questions. Mahalo for the honor and privileges, privilege of addressing this esteemed committee.
Thank you very much. Up next on this measure is Council, Hawaii County Council District 8, Dr. Oluka Goroy Inaba. Apologize if I butchered that.
Oh, no, you had it right. And mahalo, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Noe, and committee members. You're testifying on behalf of our constituents here in District 8. And I just want to share, you know, as Senator Kanuah is well aware, this is really a bottleneck area, an area that really needed support and widening for over a decade with the growth in population here on the west side. As we know, the Department of Transportation supports this project, and we're asking for your continued support and getting the funding for this widening project. So mahalo for the time and for your support. Aloha.
Thank you. And up next, Hawaii County Councilmember Rebecca Filiadas. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Aloha. Thank you, Chair Lee and Vice Chair Noe and committee members for the opportunity to testify in support of Senate Bill 2896, a measure-making appropriation for highway widening. My testimony is submitted in my individual capacity as a member of the Hawaii County Council representing District 7, in which part of this highway runs right through. It's actually right below my home, so I get to sit in the congested traffic daily, and it can take upwards of 15 minutes to travel just one mile. We are in full support of Senator Kanuah's piece of legislation and are very hopeful that with the release of new federal funding to support infrastructure improvements, that this allocation can be made. Thank you for the support of the Department of Transportation and the recognition for the need for this roadway to be widened, especially as West Hawaii is, continues to be looked at for future development and slated for well, future development that we cannot withstand more capacity without improved infrastructure. So we ask that you take that into consideration and allocate these funds to support the widening of this highway. Aloha.
Thank you very much. And that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else? Looks like we don't have anyone else. So up next, oh, I'm sorry, are there any questions? On this particular measure. If not, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to the next measure, which is Senate Bill 3162 relating to audible vehicle reverse warning systems, which requires the replacement of current audible reverse warning systems. This is back of the verse, on construction agricultural industrial vehicles with more effective broadband reversing alarms by January 2025. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Attorney General with comments. General Contractors Association in opposition. BIA Hawaii in opposition. Mattson Navigation Company in opposition. And Young Brothers in opposition. And Hawaii Transportation Association with comments. Looks like we didn't miss anybody there. So with that, I'd ask if there are any questions, but are there any questions? And if not, okay, let's move on to the next measure. By the way, for folks who are testifying, I apologize if I miss you. I'll try to keep tabs on who's coming in and out of the Zoom. But if I did miss you, just please speak up. Otherwise, I'll just try and be cautious to make sure we don't miss anybody. So with that. Sorry?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Are we still on 3162 or moved on already?
We're about to move on. Did you have a question on this one?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I just kind of tried to get some clarity on this because I understand that they don't like the beeping noise and whatnot. I'm not sure about just the cost and going forward because they did change the DBs, I don't know if you know, on some of these machines so that it only can hear with guys with the earplugs within the vicinity of the machine. So I'm not sure if some of these guys' machines maybe didn't change it, but I just was figuring the cost of moving this thing. I mean, that's just my two cents.
Yeah. Did you want, did you want to put that in the form of a question for one of the testifiers? I think.
Who, who, sorry, AG?
I can't remember. DOT might have testified briefly on this one.
Oh.
I apologize, I apologize, DOT, if that was not the case.
I don't know. I don't know. Yes, Senator?
Yes, so, so yeah, what is, yeah, can you elaborate on this warning thing?
Yeah, so we just, we just submitted concerns on this one, mainly because we don't know there were cost notifications to change on all the mechanisms on our, our equipment. And not to mention, it's not just our team equipment, but our contractors and our suppliers as well. I'm also looking at the potentials that this might void warranties on our equipment. This might cause some confusion with our workers who already know what that beep sound means. If we start changing those, those sounds to something else, I don't know if that, you know, if that's a safety issue that could come up. So those are concerns that we submitted on this.
Right. The reason, the only reason why I say that is because not only the, can you hear me? Sorry. Not only the, the warranty, it's just I don't know how, how we can go with the insurance, the liability insurance on some of the contractors that go come in and have this insurance of certain things that they have going forward. And so I, I, I kind of see that going with the cost part, but I know a lot of construction companies and construction sites are almost not in the area. But if you do this, and then we've got to change city and state, it's going to be really hard. We're already getting people, as you can see, getting in construction accidents and then getting killed. I'm just thinking it would be not only costly, but I don't know how some of these guys will get their insurance if somebody gets run over. I'm not sure. That's the clarification I wanted to get. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Let me move on to the next measure and can return to some of that discussion at the end of the hearing. So up next is SB 2126. This is relating to transportation, which increases the minimum and potential maximum fine for violating noisy muffler statutes. And testifying first on this is Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. The department stands in support.
Thank you. Testifying next is Attorney General. Oh, excuse me, Livable Honolulu, I apologize. AG did not testify on this one. Livable Honolulu in support. Free Access Coalition in support. And we have testimony from Denise Boyford, Kim Jorgensen, this is going to be all in support, Lois Langham, Jason Moore, Jean Jeremiah. And that's all the testimony that we have on this measure. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Question, yes, you can go. It. You're talking about motorcycles, yeah? Some of these motorcycles are really factory loud. How is that going to affect them?
From my understanding, when they go through its safety check, those, those market mufflers, or those that come on with the, with the vehicle itself, pass the noise, the noise requirements. But those aftermarket that they trade out to, those are the ones that, that cause a lot of concerns from a volume perspective. The concerns that we see, and the problems that we see is when, when they get their safety check, they have their, their stock muffler. They change them out afterwards, after they get their safety check. And that's the concern that we have. We, we don't have any enforcement power beyond just those safety checks.
Okay, and one more follow-up, Chair. The only reason why I say this is with some of them, well, they use it, I don't necessarily say they would use it, but some of them change them out because for safety reasons, yeah. Oahu, most especially, not on the neighbor islands. Neighbor islands, they're very motorcycle conscious. Over here, we get too much cars. So some of the times of the, I know because I have a stop through 2003 motorcycle, and it's loud enough for me that people can hear my motorcycle coming. But some of the bikes, I know they modify them, not, I mean, modify them, but they put pipes that is a little louder so that the cars that they're driving by to know that they're there or they can aware of their surroundings and knowing there's a motorcycle sharing the road with them. I can understand the mopeds and these other little vehicles that go in around the neighborhood just to make noise. But the only one that I have a little problem with this building, some of the motorcycles that have these exhausts, but I know they feel that it's for safety that the car might have known that they're right next to the door and have to change lane because they can hear the exhaust. So that's my concern. Just wanted to get your take on that. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other questions? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure. SB 2720 relating to energy. This allows for new electric vehicle charging stations having a single port to qualify for the existing EV charging station rebate and increases flexibility to PUC to administer the program and allows for marketing and outreach expenses to be included within allowable administration costs. Testifying first on 2720 is going to be Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. The department stands in support.
Thank you. Up next, Hawaii State Energy Office with, oh, good afternoon.
Hello, Chair. This is Scott Glenn, and we stand on our testimony with written comments. And our, just to note that we are very supportive of the electric vehicle charging station program. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Public Utilities Commission.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair members, David Parsons on behalf of the PUC. We submitted, submitted testimony with comments and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Hawaiian Electric in support. I believe, oh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair. Hawaiian Electric has submitted written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. And Hawaii Energy with comments. Blue Planet Foundation.
Aloha, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Noe, and members of the committee, and Melissa Miaschero with Blue Planet Foundation. And Blue Planet supports this bill that offers programmatic adjustments to the electric vehicle charging system rebate program, namely adding flexibility to ensure that the program keeps pace with market changes and technology changes, and then also ensuring that we are deploying stations where they're needed most, particularly in multi-unit dwellings and also low and low to moderate income communities. Thank you for hearing this, Bill.
Thank you. Up next, Alliance for Automotive Innovation.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Tiffany Yojima, testifying on behalf of the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. The auto innovators are in support of this measure, and we will stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Tesla.
Thank you, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Noe, and members of the committee. My name is Sandy Wong. I'm here on behalf of Tesla. We are in support of this bill, especially including level-two chargers with one port for new chargers. We would ask for two friendly amendments. We would ask that that expansion also be included for upgrading chargers and/or replacing chargers. And then we also had a proposed amendment on page nine in regards to direct current fast charging, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Testifying next is Ulapono Initiative.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Vice Chair Noe, and members of the committee. Michael Monicante here on behalf of Ulapono Initiative. Will stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. 350 Hawaii. Sherid Pollock in support. And Our Revolution Hawaii.
Hello, Mr. Glenn. Yes, hi. How are you doing? I'm representing our 5,000 members supportive statewide. We stand in strong support of this measure. Firstly, I know a lot of folks who want to buy electric vehicles, and a big problem here in the state of Hawaii is having effective infrastructure so they can charge up those vehicles. So this is a brilliant idea and I support it fully. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And finally, Hawaii Auto Dealers Association in support. If there's anyone I missed, please feel free to speak up. Otherwise, are there any questions? If not, I have just a couple for Tesla. If you're still here, Ms. Wong.
Thank you.
Thanks. You had suggested two amendments in particular, one relating to charger, the technology neutrality, and the other related to something else, which my notes don't say right here, but can you go over that second one?
So the second one, so one, we wanted to, to align with the amendment that's being proposed in the bill. One is that chargers with one port for new chargers, but we also wanted to expand that to upgrades or repairs, and that would be on page six, line four. And then on page nine, line one through four. This is section four after such, under section H. We wanted to delete by requiring total direct current fast charging systems installed and rebated, rebated a single site to provide connectors that support at least two charging stations. So we want to create as much flexibility as possible. Right now, it's a little narrow and, and it actually favors chargers that tend to be more expensive than what's out there in the market.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then just circling back to Energy Office, Mr. Glenn, if you're still here. Or Mr. Young.
Yes, yes, Chair Lee. Now, I have Christopher Younger with the Energy Office here as well, able to help with questions.
Thanks. I just want to follow up. Just based on, I think Tesla's comments just a minute ago, talking about some of the flexibility components, is that something that, from your perspective, you guys would consider?
Chris, could I ask you to help out while he's coming on? One thing I would just note is that the program is being run through the PUC and working with their third-party administrator in terms of really defining a lot of the features. So I think one thing we're looking to help is for the PUC to have the flexibility to do this. So if this is something that really helps them implement the program more effectively, that'd certainly be a consideration that we have. May I defer to Chris Younger to tell?
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you. So I think Scott summed it up well. We are supportive of the EV charging, want to ensure that there's flexibility, and we were just looking for some time to coordinate with various agencies to make sure that it was accomplishing that aim. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have to say, you guys must have the most beautiful state offices I think we've ever seen. I didn't know they got upgraded like that. We'll actually have to do that in real life sometime. Okay, any further questions on this measure? If not, thank you. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, for the PUC, are you still here?
Hi, yes, Chair.
Parsons, yeah, thanks. Just following up on that. I got carried away with the Energy Office's luxurious accommodations. But just on that point regarding flexibility and what Tesla had raised, as far as your perspective at the PUC.
Yes, thank you. I, I think, you know, that's something that we certainly appreciate about this measure is that it provides certain additional flexibility into the statute for the program administrator. So that's the commission working with Hawaii Energy and other EV stakeholders. So so there are certain requirements in the statute that, you know, prescribe the kind of charging stations and, you know, certain definitions and that sort of thing. And, and this measure would relax some of those requirements, but also add some other ones in there. So I appreciate the parts of the measure that, that would, you know, allow the commission to work with stakeholders to help tweak the program as it evolves over time to make sure that it has the greatest impact.
I mean, just to, I think, the amendment suggested for technology neutral application. Is there any position you guys have on that?
Generally, that we would favor that. I think there are, my understanding is that there are different models of electric vehicles have different kinds of charging port requirements. And so some, if you go to different charging stations, sometimes they won't work with your kind of vehicle, and you have to find one that, that's suitable for your, the connector that your car has. So I think in general, we would be looking for charging stations that have the greatest sort of use out there for customers. But that's something that, you know, the details on that are kind of in the weeds, and it, and it can be specific to models and those change over time, too. So that's something that we generally work closely with Hawaii Energy and the Energy Office and other stakeholders like those that have testified to identify sort of what, what kinds of program eligibility or other requirements for the charging stations would, would be best. So the flexibility is certainly appreciated and allows us to tailor the programs to, to meet the needs of customers.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions on this measure? If not, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next measure, SB 3158 relating to transportation.
Senator, Senator, sorry.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. There's, there's a testimony, and I'm not sure if you called them. There's testimony and it has, it has the red, oh, it's from Noelani Derrickson from Tesla. Is that the same amendment that she's speaking about in her testimony that Sandy gave? It seems like hers is a little more in-depth. Sandy, can you check with Sandy?
Yes, so that's the same testimony.
Is it?
Yes, and so I was trying to summarize her testimony because I know, I knew I had a time limit. Basically, it was just those two friendly amendments that we were asking, and basically, all we're asking for is a more, a little more flexibility because we just didn't want chargers that were less expensive or could accommodate some cars that wouldn't, wouldn't be eligible for the rebate. So we want as many people to get the rebate as possible.
Okay, all right, just to clarify.
Okay.
Sandy, thanks. Thanks, Chair.
No problem. Okay, let's move on to the next measure. SB 3158 relating to transportation, which appropriates funds for subsidies to encourage the purchase and use of electric vehicles and electric bikes. And testifying first on 3158 is the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. The department stands on its testimony in support.
Thank you. Up next, Hawaii State Energy Office.
Hello, Chair. The Hawaii State Energy Office stands on its testimony and support and would note that this bill is in alignment with the governor's own administrative bill that was introduced to support EV rebates for low and moderate income families, and that we would like to see this, this kind of policy move forward one way or another because we think helping everyone be able to take advantage of the EV opportunities out there will help more of our people participate in the clean energy revolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Alliance for Automotive Innovation in support. Oh, good afternoon.
Sorry, hi, afternoon, Tiffany Yojima for the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. We stand on our written testimony in support. This measure would create incentives for purchasers of electric vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Ulapono Initiative.
Afternoon, Chair. Ulapono will stand on its testimony in support.
Thank you. Tesla.
Yes, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Noe, members of the committee. We will stand on our comments in support.
Thank you. Blue Planet Foundation.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Blue Planet Foundation supports this measure. We think it's important to help us accelerate the adoption of electric vehicles and make them more affordable for a wider variety of Hawaii residents. And we noted a comment in our testimony. If there's conversations about kind of funding for this, we see that it's coming out of the general fund. We think that this would be a good application for funding out of the barrel tax funding. But if that's a route that's Um but if that's a a route that's considered, just want to make sure that that doesn't deplete in any way um the the really important program that we just spoke about um for electric vehicles um charger rebate. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh Hawaii Bicycling League in support. And uh one individual Charles Prentice with comments. Uh I believe that's all the testimonies measure. Are there any questions? Uh if not, I've got uh just a couple here. Um the State Energy Office, Mr Glenn.
Yes, Chair.
Thanks. Just following up on uh the testimony from Blue Planet Foundation, looking at switching the funding mechanism for this to the barrel tax. Is that something you guys would support?
Uh Chair, I think that is something we would be supportive of. It's a more direct nexus of the use of funds. The purpose of the barrel tax is to reduce the reliance on fossil fuel and accelerating adoption of EVs um and not just cars, but also other types of transportation modes. I think would help more people and more families as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um and then oh, I guess that's that's all I have. Uh any other questions on this measure? If not, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to the next measure. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh real quick DOT, uh still on three one five eight. All right, thanks. Uh just following up. Uh so so uh following the route that uh Blue Planet and the Energy Office suggested, basically, which sounds like it would essentially be the same functional framework as the existing uh charger program. Is that something DOT is okay with as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. If there's no further questions on this one, um let's move on to the next measure, SB three three one three relating to transportation, which establishes a mile mileage-based road user fee with a cap on with a cap for electric vehicles. Uh this follows up on um some work that's been done over the last few years. Um and testifying first on this measure is the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. I really appreciate you um introducing this bill. We stand in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh up next, Hawaii State Energy Office.
Uh thank you, Chair. We stand on our testimony with comments.
Thank you. Uh and next, uh Mr Yamachika Tax Foundation.
Uh thank you, Chair and members. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Uh we've submitted written comments. I just wanted to emphasize that even the road usage charge uh that's now being considered by the uh Department of Transportation and the stakeholder groups that it's convened uh is supposed to be in lieu of the fuel tax, uh not in addition to it. Uh the uh proposed charge here is on top of everything else, so that's why we're concerned. I may have to answer any questions.
Sure, thank you. Um up next is Our Revolution Hawaii.
Hello, Mahalo, hi. Mahalo, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mahalo Nulua for having this public hearing. My name is Dave Mahalnix, representing our five thousand members supportive of Our Revolution Hawaii. We stand in strong opposition to SB thirty three thirteen. When I was a school, I took an architectural class and instructor told us when you clearly define a problem, solution will inevitably present itself. This is appropriate segue into why we oppose SB thirty three thirteen. The first major problem is climate change is already here and is an existential threat to our humanity. Uh this was acknowledged last year by legislature who voted to declare climate an emergency. And we thank you all for your foresight and wisdom supporting that measure. Carbon dioxide emissions are driving climate change. To effectively address climate change, the solution is to cut our CO2 emissions. Gas-powered automobiles are the leading producer of CO2 emissions. One solution is to get rid of gas-powered cars and replace them with electric vehicles. Scientists say we have less than ten years to get fossil fuel vehicles off the road, which means uh and cut our CO2 emissions as soon as possible. Currently, two percent of our vehicles on the road are electric vehicles. So to hurry up this transition, it falls on government to incentivize change. The government provided rebates to increase the number of homes with solar power. And with that incentive, the number of homes with solar panels exploded. Currently, there is an incentive to put batteries in homes, which is increasing battery storage in Hawaii. An effective way to get rid of, get more electric vehicles on the street is incentivize and move, to move from gas cars to electric. Which brings us to this bill that penalizes electric car owners for owning electric car. This bill will result unintended consequences of people not wanting to buy electric cars because of additional absorbent fees associated with owning one. There's already a fifty-dollar annual fee on electric vehicles. Add additional fee is counterproductive. If legislature has failed its commitment to address the growing climate crisis, then you have to act, do all you can do to get rid of gas-powered cars and support transition to electric vehicles. Concrete actions would be to support, to, sorry, concrete action is to support this transition is the vote in opposition to this bill. Um we need to get more electric vehicles on the road and incentivize that, not penalize electric car owner vehicles. Thank you so much for your kind attention.
Thank you very much. Up next is Ulapono Initiative.
Afternoon, Chair. Members of the committee, Michael Muni Kati here on behalf of the Ulapono Initiative. Uh you have a written testimony uh submitted with comments, uh just a few um items that we were look for um from this committee, a little bit more clarification on some of those blank amounts that are um attached in this bill, I think for us to do to really look at the the overall impact of of legislation such as this. I think some of those numbers will be helpful in trying to deter determine uh you know, whether to support this further or honestly, opposition for it. So we appreciate uh anything you folks can do at committee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh three fifty Hawaii in opposition. Uh Hawaii EV Association in opposition. Kawai EV in opposition. Tesla.
Um good afternoon, Chair. Sandy Wong again here for Tesla. Uh we have submitted comments, uh and I will stand on them and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have additional um individuals testifying to in opposition, five with comments and one in support. And that's all the testimony we have on. Oh, I apologize. No, we have an additional um we have three late individuals uh with opposition, one in support and one with comments. Is there anybody I missed? Who's here with us today? If not, all right. Are there any questions on this measure? Senator DeCoy.
Thank you. Uh 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 Ed, please. It, you still aren't sniffing.
Hello, Senator.
Hey, hi, Ed. So you know, and I noticed that you support this bill and as much as um you know, we want clean energy, renewable energy, electric vehicles. Um I do know that all electric vehicles also use the roads like other vehicles is it, what's the impacts? Um you know, aside from the rebates that they've been given and so forth. You know, I know like there are many on Molokai also and um that want electric vehicles, but again, you know, what is the impacts to our roads? And then a constant upgrades and upkeep that you folks have to do.
Yeah, Ed, thanks for that question, Senator. You know, um the Department of Transportation, we are absolutely supportive of EV conversion. We we pushed it very hard to make sure that we convert very quickly on our side as well. Um but we want to make sure that that when we start looking at who pays for the transportation system, there's an equity across the board. Um at this time, we don't want that the the burden of paying for the system to fall on those who can't afford electric vehicle and and appreciate and applaud the uh the legislature for pushing forward measures that could um that close that 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 gap. But the bill, there's some people who cannot afford to move to electric vehicles. We want to make sure that when we push the system forward that everybody has the opportunity to pay their fair share of the system and nobody has to to bear the burden of it. So we still have to make sure we maintain the rules. We still have to make sure we we build the capacity and the infrastructure that's necessary for everybody to use them. So we do that. Everybody should pay fairly into it.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Thanks, Chair.
Uh further questions? If not, I've got a couple. Um first for um uh Ed, since you're, since you're on. Um you know, a a few of the testifiers had raised the issue of there already being a fifty-dollar uh fee on electric vehicles annually. Um it seemed to suggest, some seem to suggest that this would be on top of that, but the way I read the bill, that fifty-dollar fee goes away and is replaced by a mileage-based fee. Is that right?
You're absolutely right, Senator. But that's that's the intent. We we don't want to double target anybody. So we're looking at replacing that fifty-dollar fee with with this road usage charge. And there's a potential that the person who hops into the road uses this charge pays less than the fifty dollars that that they're paying now.
Okay, thank you. And then Mr uh Mahalnix, are you still with us?
From, yes, I'm here. Yes.
There you are.
All right.
Thank you. Um you know, I appreciate your comments and um wanting to uh reduce emissions and and all of it. Um I think this measure seems to have come out of uh an idea that over time, all vehicles on the road would be um we would pay their fair share for upkeep and everything else, including, you know, gas-powered cars, EVs and and anything else that's out there. Um from from that perspective, does this mechanism as as a framework make sense to you in that way? Or is your concern just that it applies to EVs on the front end?
Well, like I said, the the um uh eventually, yes, we're gonna have to like stop having gas tax, right? Because we're gonna get off the like of gas vehicle. So all cars will have to have some sort of a, you know, a transportation fee put on them. And uh so, yeah, we that that we anticipate that. Right now, we've only got two percent of electric vehicles on the road. So we need to incentivize getting more on the road and and by adding more taxes or making more expensive. That that is a, that's a, you know, burden. And I and I think that would discourage people. So that that's, yeah, but I agree with you. Yes, eventually all vehicles would be taxed in some way to use the roads, of course.
Okay, thank you very much. Um and then finally, um I guess back to I guess back to DOT briefly. If you're still with us. Um hey, uh so so I think understanding that, you know, there's been sort of a long-term effort to address all vehicles on the road, um this being just one fraction of that. Uh can you explain why why EVs first in this measure?
Absolutely. And and one of, I want to say that, I mean, this, we're not trying to target EVs. We're making sure that we're starting to push this system across the board. But I gotta say, I mean, if you look at the gas tax, it's one of the most elegant taxes for us, for the DOT. We just kick back and then Isaac cut us a check every quarter. It's really easy, right? For us to lift um the department to ensure that we can start now track, tracking, monitoring, and then enforcing the payments for uh for a road usage charge, it's a big lift for the DOT. I mean, we're gonna increase the cost on collections by one to three percent um in the way we do it. But within, that being said, we have to upgrade all of our facilities internally, our staff internally, and then spread out our enforcement pieces beyond that. So we just thought this was a perfect opportunity for us to look at starting up the program that we would look at long-term covering the entire state. I would say, and if you don't mind me adding, Senator, um if you look at it from a federal perspective, the gas taxes has has not been sus- sufficient to sustain the federal US DOT funding for a long time now. They're gonna move towards in that direction. They've already funded fifteen states to look at pilots in their area. For us to move forward on the, now, to ensure that we're ahead of the change rather than behind it, would be tremendous for the state of Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. And then just following up on that, if there, you know, right now, um there were previous um other incentives for EVs, pre-parking airports, that kind of thing. If we were to codify some of the other benefits EVs still continue to get, I think, under DOT's administrative rules, such as access to HOV lanes until such a time that, let's say, they make up a certain percentage of annual sales or something to that effect. Or if there are other benefits that we can codify to ensure that people understand that this isn't something that is supposed to disincentivize EV adoption. Is that something you guys would be open to?
We're happy to. We we changed our administrative rules to ensure that EVs can still use that uh the zipper lane and the HOV lanes as a single occupancy. So we're happy to look at that. Uh I would adjust or recommend language that says um that follows federal highway requirements, that if it starts degrading in the capacity of the lane, then we'd have to change it over. But but we'd be happy to work with you on that and recommend language.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this measure? If not, uh why don't we move on? Thank you, everybody. Um up next is SB two one one eight relating to traffic violations, which requires the driver of a moped to be in immediate possession of a valid driver's license or instruction permit at all times. And testifying first on two one one eight is uh DOT.
Thank you, Chair. The the DOT stands in strong support.
Thank you. And up next is Moped Doctors, Inc. Uh in opposition.
Present.
Oh, good afternoon. Oh, sorry, they are present?
Not present.
Oh, not present. Okay. Um well, that is all the testimony we had on this measure. Um are there any questions? If not, thanks. Let's move on to the next measure, SB three seven seven relating to traffic violations, which increases all fines for traffic violations relating to the operation or ownership of a vehicle by twenty percent. And testifying first on this measure is uh DOT.
Thank you, Chair. This department stands in support.
Thank you. Uh up next is Office of the Public Defender. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Uh the Office of the Public Defender stands in strong opposition to this bill. In particular, the increases for driving without license charges, it's only going to affect our poorest residents in a time when they can least afford to be paying extra fines and our financial outlook seems a lot better. So this bill just seems unnecessarily cruel in these tough times. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Uh we have additional testimony from one individual in support. And that's all the testimony on this measure. Are there any questions? Uh if not, for the public defender, um I have a follow-up question. Uh thanks. I totally appreciate where you're coming from. Obviously, there's been a lot of work on on um ensuring that those who can't pay fines are trapped into a a debtor's prison and so forth. Um I I think the intent of this measure, um so it would seem, appears to be obviously to to make sure folks are really following the rules of the road. There was a task force, as I recall, um uh that the legislature created a couple of years ago that was looking at this exact issue of who can pay and and who cannot and and ensuring that there's sort of fair application there. Or is there um language you might suggest or some mechanism you might suggest that would uh allow even those who might be um easily able to pay, you know, fines and fees and kind of just blatantly ignore them, uh to have those penalties, I guess, increased appropriately uh without trapping folks who are unable to pay.
Uh there's no language I can think of that I think our office would be supported in terms of an across-the-board increase in fees because you know, even if it comes to smaller infraction-type charges, eventually, that's gonna cause an inconvenience for anyone when it turns into a stopper. It's just who's gonna have the access and ability to um get into the court system and pay those fines back. So um we would be opposed to increases in that. I mean, if anything, make everyone do community service across the board. That seems like the most equitable thing rather than letting some people get out of it with paying fines. But I understand that's a far way off.
Uh well, to that point, sorry, didn't we pass a licensed stopper um bill like two years ago that ended that practice?
Uh there was a bill that was passed that would allow someone to apply with the courts to get their stoppers cleared. However, the courts have not set up any easy mechanism for which, through which people can do that. So it is from my understanding, very um underutilized. I don't know of anyone uh who has been able to do that. Um there are people who are able to go through specific programs that we have, such as Community Outreach Court. Um prior to the pandemic, there was the RAC program, but those are still focused on um community service work conversions. Uh you know, with the pandemic and everything, that's kind of made it so that we're just operating business as usual as much as possible and not really implementing new programs.
Okay, and then lastly, uh when it comes to community service, I recognize, you know, this bill, should it move forward, goes to the Judiciary Committee where perhaps this end of the conversation is more appropriate. But for community service, um is it viewed at all as uh equally a burden for folks who can't afford to pay because they might have to take time off work and then be unable to, you know, earn those dollars, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, that is a concern for a lot of our clients who, you know, don't have maybe paid time off and things like that. So the equation of paying this versus doing community service work at the end of the day can be a financial So the equation of paying this versus doing community service work at the end of the day can be a financial burden. So I don't know if that answered the question.
Yeah, you just gave me an idea. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, any further questions on this? If not, let's move on to the next measure. SB two one zero five relating to the renewal of drivers licenses, which allows for the renewal of drivers licenses online or by electronic or digital means. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. The department stands in opposition.
Thank you. Up next is the City and County of Honolulu Department of Information Technology in support and City and County of Honolulu Department of Customer Service in support. Common Cause Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We provided written comments on this measure. We are concerned with how this bill will interact with or integrate with automatic voter registration that was passed last year. According to the National Voter Registration Act, with every with every driver's licensing application, a person has to be presented with the opportunity to register to vote, and that is ABR. So we really appreciate ABR being passed last session. We just don't know how the online driver's licensing application will be integrated with ABR. So that is our question. We just want to make sure it's a smooth, seamless integration process. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have testimony from one individual in support. And that is all our testifiers. Are there any questions? Vice Chair.
Okay, Sandy Ma. Sandy?
Yes, thank you. Yes.
You know, I think it will have an impact. And and why I say that, and you're correct, because you're not sure. But I like the idea about, you know, applying for renewal electronically. So there must be somehow a mechanism that kind of triggers a question or something about the voting. Because it's, you know, I I have concerns about that too, because, you know, as we know, we have influx of new residents. And we want them to vote. And so I'm kind of just curious, you know, and we want the young ones graduating out of high school as they reach the age to get their driver's license. They may just go online and then, you know, skip the voting. So Chair, I think there will be some impact until such time that this measure somehow addresses that as well. And maybe as this measure moves to judiciary, in the meantime, that that addresses, because there's something that we have to include in this bill. Yeah, I I think it it would, yeah, not be acceptable, you know, to bypass our right to vote on getting a review, applying for driver's license or review anyway. So or you can put in the committee report to make sure that judiciary and maybe you and judiciary can work on some language or something. But this will have an impact, I'm sure. Okay, just to add.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and whoever wrote that ABR bill must be a genius legislator and
I totally agree.
That we all worked on together. All right, following up, any other questions? Senator DeCoi.
Thank you, Chair. Ed, please. So 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 Ed, I I know that you oppose this bill, and I gotta agree with you. You know, many of those who are required to get a physical, in this case, CDL, Commercial Driver's License, for those that have a handicap, whether it be if they're using a CPAT machine and so forth. I think a lot of them, we've had accidents on the vision part, yeah. So the electronic renewal, it'll be a problem, but I like the fact of what Senator Noe said, too. You know, we want people to to do that, to be able to make sure they're voting and stuff. But, you know, the last request now by the renewal is a one year renewal, yeah, the physical health certificates added, they have to be carried. So I I I agree with what you're saying. Other than that, I think that, you know, you you spot on on your on your testimony. So thank you. Thank you, Chair. Just some comments. Thank you.
And I'll follow up just on that point for DOT. So with the with the issue of obviously wanting everybody on the road to be able to see further than the front of their hood, are there other places where you might be able to get like a doctor's, you know, separate doctor's vision test or whatever, then send that in or something like that?
You know, there were. So there were cases where people were sending in their doctor's report, doctor's report to say that they were fit. But there were too many cases when they came in and the the staff noticed physical deficiencies in their in their ability to operate. That just causes me a lot of concern. I mean, having a broad sweep statement that it's not necessary anymore just makes me concerned that we'd be putting people on the road that that definitely would have challenges being there. So that's my biggest concern on the basis.
So right now, I haven't had to do this in a while. I think I need to coming up very soon. When you renew your license, you have to go down and at the DMV, they have the actual vision thing you like look into, right? And you have to like read off the numbers or whatever it is, right?
That's right.
Okay, there must be some way to. I don't know.
Yeah, and so we we want to move in this direction. We're working with the city on digital ID. Make sure that we can move in this direction in the future. I just don't think we're there yet. And we haven't worked out with them first, how we're going to set up the system. And second, how we're going to make sure that people are actually fit to drive. So we're just asking for more time. I'm closing this because one more time to figure out how we do that. And we'll work with the city to make sure we move this forward. They have their consultant on board to help work that out. And we're going to, while we're working out the platform, we're starting, we're trying to work out the rules to make sure everybody stays safe.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
But Chair, but Ed, this is a renewal. So what do you think? Okay.
Yeah, it's the same thing. So from my perspective, when when we get our online renewals, it's really difficult. If we cannot, if if we, the government, cannot see that a person is fit to drive, it'd be really difficult for me to say that I can that I can buy off of this.
I I I understand that, and I agree with you. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chair. Thanks.
Okay, there's no further questions then. That is the last measure on our agenda this afternoon.
So just just a quick call for DOT. You know, Chair, this was something great during the pandemic for my dad, who had all his documents and he had to load it all up and and get his renewal. Something happened over here. My video, they've restarted, sorry. So for the doctor's note for vision, because of his age, he still has to get a clearance from the doctor anyway and to be uploaded. So you guys are stood against that, Ed, for the renewal of their registration, I mean, license?
No, so there, I mean, we do provide provisions for people to renew online, renew online or via mail. But there's requirements for timeframes that a person must come in for their physical checks. That I don't want to get rid of. I mean, that I think is necessary to ensure that people are fit to drive in their element.
Okay, this is figuring if you have a doctor's clearance on the auto read documents, so the doctor can confirm and verify and send it to you guys. I think should be would be okay, I guess. This is my feeling.
The only reason I would say that I'm concerned about that is we've seen too many times in the past when people had come in with their doctors notes to say that they're good. But the staff had recognized deficiencies in either the vision or their their ability to move. So just because of that, it causes me pause. And Chair, we're working with the city on a system and a setup to ensure that we can go towards digital ID. That's what we want to get to. But we need some time to make sure we set up the platform.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
There's no further questions then. That wraps up our last bill. So what we'll do is we'll go into a recess for decision making and we will be back shortly. Recession. Thank you. We're reconvening the Senate Committee on Transportation for Decision Making on our three P M agenda Tuesday, February first here via Zoom. We did have a few measures, starting with SB two eight two five relating to harbors. This is the study to look at Kalailo Harbor and what can be done to address sort of the future of shipping and transportation over there. We'll note that there's a blank appropriation in the bill, which we'll leave blank. But move this forward as is, just noting in the committee report that there's a tight timeline to take a look at this, considering, you know, the end of the year is around the corner. And we know that some of the leases are coming up. So we'll make that apparent for the next committee. So any questions or comments on this one?
Yes. I think I I talked about the reports date, the reporting for 2023. I think it's short a time for this open measure, because when you look at expansion, you also need to see the harbors are going to be expanded. I'm seeing I'm having issue with the implementation of the due date. So I think we should give them another year. We did have the Young Brothers Working Group and we went two and a half years. So I think that's a short period. Section two, I think I I prefer adding more to those that should be conducting the DOT, the comprehensive study. And it says that DOT should also include, number one, offloading of cargo containers, and number two, livestock transportation. I'd like to add that we add the HUGS group, who's a big entity that it's similar to the airlines industry. When you do anything at the airports, you include the airline industry as well. I'd like to add that we and we add HUGS group, the Harbors Users Group, and as well as the the livestock or the cattle industry as well for comments, because we only have livestock transportation. So I think the agriculture industry should be part of this study, or considered by DOT Harbors.
Yeah, we can note that in the committee report, because it's a study and not a task force, there's no explicit members to name, but we'll ask.
How often that the that the agency looks at committee reports? So anyway.
Yeah, we can be sure to follow up. I understand what you're saying.
I'm going to know if you're not going to, I'm sorry, but this in this issue is a big island issue. And if the industry folks are not part of it, I want to know if the livestock can take the the travel from that part of the ocean going from Honolulu Harbor to Kalailoa. I don't know if it's the worst part, and maybe that's why they didn't go into Kalailoa at the beginning. So I I'm I'm just concerned. I'm very concerned that I'm going to fight for my industry as well. If they're not part of it, the study does not tell DOT, all they gotta do is say, no, we're only told to include these, to do these things. But I think it's important. I don't know how you guys feel.
No, I hear you. This is definitely an issue of importance, particularly for the west side of Oahu, as well as the big island industry over there. So I don't think this is a
Tell us what the wave actions is like.
Well, I I agree with Senator Noe. We have a lot of, you know, agricultural growers on the west side beside the cattle industry and whatnot, and hauling it all the way to town and even try to get it on a law carbo. It's always a tragedy and trial, especially around when we have the, you know, different kind of activities on the neighbor islands. So I mean, from a neighborhood part, this could let you know, Chris, I've been trying to get that harbor to get some kind of facelift. So whatever we're getting, but we gotta make sure that we have our agriculture industry into this bill. Livestock is great, cars are great, but without agriculture industry striving and prospering is going to be hard.
Well, to you guys, why don't we do this? We will be coming back for a few of the other bills on Thursday as well. So why don't we defer this till Thursday? We'll chat with some of our colleagues who've been working on this issue, and we can circle back with everybody for Thursday, one, excuse me, February third.
And it's such a minor, it's such a minor change. You know, I I don't see any impacts that would greatly stop doing a a study. But you want to make sure that, you know, we talk about transparency all the time. So we don't know what transportation is going to do, and they can avoid as many people if they don't want to include in a discussion. I just want it to be part of the bill.
Sure. So we'll circle back on this one, noting everybody's comments here.
Appreciate it.
We'll defer it to two, three, at the end of our three P M agenda. So up next is SB six five two relating to special license plates, authorizing the issuance of special number license plates for members of the Hawaii Civil Air Patrol. A recognitionist that passed this, seeing all testimony in support, as is. Any comments, questions? If not, I believe I have the vote sheets here. One second. So we'll be voting on SB six five two. Recommendation is to, I should have sent these vote sheets over earlier, so I saved me time. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair.
Aye. Oh, sorry, I'm I'm
Oh, no, sorry. Yeah, you can, even though I'm taking the thing, you can still do it. Yeah, please, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, no, I I thought I was still muted. Yeah, aye.
Oh, sorry. Did you want, you want to take the vote for these? And I can just write it down? Does it matter for protocol?
I I'm fine. I I'm you're you're you got the vote sheets.
Okay, okay.
I was muted, so I thought you couldn't hear me.
No worries. Senator Shimabukuro?
Aye.
And Senator Favela?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Recommendation adopted. Up next, moving on to SB two eight nine six, making an appropriation for highway widening. This is funding for Hawaii Island, Queen Kahua Maru and Kuaikini highways. Noting the appropriation in the measure is already blank. We'll move it on to the Ways and Means Committee as is. Any comments, any questions on this one? If not, so recommendation passed SB two eight nine six unamended, noting all members present. Are there any reservations or no's? If not, measure is adopted. And moving on to SB three one six two relating to audible vehicle reverse warning systems. This is the backup Bieber's bill for construction agricultural industrial vehicles. What we're going to do is defer this one till two, three as well, to the end of our Thursday agenda as well. We'll try and check on how this applies to certain elements in the industry and see if we can narrow this down a bit. Then moving on to SB two one two six. This increases the minimum and potential maximum fine for violating noisy mufflers. Want to move this forward as an SD one, just blanking out the penalties. And we can let J D C figure out what's going to happen with that. So any questions or comments on this measure? If not, three, one, two, excuse me, two, one, two, six. Recommendation is to pass unamended, noting all members present. Are there any reservations or no's?
Reservation.
Reservations for Senator Favela? Anyone else? If not, recommendation is adopted. Okay, moving on to the next measure, SB two seven two zero relating to energy. This is electric vehicle charging station program flexibility. We want to defer this till Thursday end of agenda as well. We're going to check with P U C and a few other stakeholders to make sure we get Uh, we want to defer this till, uh, Thursday end of agenda as well. We're gonna check with, uh, PUC and a few other stakeholders to make sure we get this right. Uh, so we'll return Thursday on that one. And then SB three one five eight relating to transportation. Uh, this is appropriating funds for EVs and electric bicycles. Uh, similarly, we'll defer this to Thursday, so we can check with other stakeholders. And SB three three one three as well. This is, uh, the mileage-based road user fee. Uh, also, uh, we'll defer till, uh, end of agenda Thursday, so we can work out some of the details with, uh, the department and some of the stakeholders. Um, SB two one one eight, uh, this is the, uh, requiring driver of a moped to be like everybody else and have a license on them. Uh, recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions or comments on this one? If not, uh, recommendation is to pass unamended on SB two one one eight, uh, noting all members present. Are there any reservations or no's? If not, everyone votes aye and recommendation is adopted. Uh, up next is SB three seven seven relating to traffic violations. This increases fines for, um, related to the operation or ownership of a vehicle. Uh, this one similarly will, uh, defer till Thursday, so we can check, uh, their stakeholders. SB two one zero five, uh, relating to the renewal of drivers licenses, which allows for the renewal of drivers licenses by electronic or digital means. Uh, and this one as well will defer till, uh, end of agenda Thursday, so we can see if we can figure out the issues relating to, uh, vision verification and, and so forth. Um, and we'll also follow up with the city. I'm told that the city was here to testify on this measure, so... Uh, but due to some technical glitch or something, they were unable to participate. So we did want to follow up with the city as well. So with that, um, that is the end of our agenda. We'll see everybody Thursday. Mahalo, everyone.